Time is now six thirty-five. I'd like to call to order the December eleventh, two thousand thirteen Regular Village Board meeting. Roll call, please.
Your Honor, trustee Racine will not be here. He's sworn deputy clerk to myself. There's a death in my family.
Okay.
Continue after that. Trustee Gonzalez.
Can I stand and do the pledge?
Yeah, according to the agenda, I'm doing call to order first.
All right.
I'm just saying this.
Here.
I follow the agenda as much as I can.
No, no.
Am I reading this wrong?
You are, sir.
Yes, sir.
Call to order is the first thing?
That's what I'm doing.
Pledge is the second. Roll call.
Sorry. Hey, I'm just trying to read it.
Call in your time.
I tried to be nice.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Gray.
Here.
Holston.
Present.
Horn.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Just want to make sure I do it right. Open to the public, agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Come to podium, give your name and address. It is always be nice. No takers. No takers on the open to the public consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull the meeting from November thirteenth.
Okay.
And I would like item five removed.
One and five. Just want to clarify, favorable recommendations or disagreement acknowledgement, that's not necessarily saying we agree or not agree with, but it's just being acknowledged.
I just want further discussion.
There'll be discussion before we go, but we can pull it, that's fine. Anybody else have a, I didn't elect your head for a vote? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with items one and five removed.
So moved.
Holston and Horn. Just to clarify, Horn made the previous motion, but there's a failure to have a second on that, so I guess it would be corrected. Doing what we're doing. Just want to make sure we don't have a attorney present. Thank you. All right. So Holston and Horn, and then roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Discussion regarding items, item number one.
Yes, sir. Page three of the minutes. Appointment to fill vacancy of village trustee for the last minutes. The, if you go down to the bottom of that page, it says the oath of office for new appointments was executed. That would have happened before I took five different votes, or this wouldn't be legal. So I'm just questioning whether we would want that. The oath of office for new appointments was executed before the vacancies were filled and the votes took place for those vacancies because I voted on every one of those.
You voted for.
Attorney Josh Leonard. All of those were voted for. I took the oath of office before those votes were taking place.
So.
I'm thinking that should come up to the top there.
So the oath of, the oath of office for yourself was administered immediately upon your appointment.
Right. That's correct. And then I sat down and I took the, and I participated in the votes.
Okay.
The minutes probably should just.
Agreed. Hundred percent. I, clerk Hager, would the appropriate thing to do here would be to defer this until the next meeting for approval, or can we simply make with modifications?
You can load an approval that has amended.
As amended. Okay, so the amendment would be to, third paragraph, just below the third paragraph on page three, would be an assertion for an agreement on this, that the oath of office was administered to trustee Holston by the village attorney.
And for point of clarification, my legal name is, middle name is David, not Dave.
And what was your first name?
Alfred.
With those amendments, are we okay to approve the minutes as amended?
Page four.
Okay.
New business. I believe trustee Horn's name is trusted Horn, not trustee Horn.
Page four, trustee.
Just a typo. It's just a typo. Unless he's changed his name.
I've not.
Have you thought about it? I'm just kidding, Doug.
That's all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's Holston and Gonzalez. Roll call.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Good. Then, item number five, per trustee Gonzalez has been pulled. I just want to make sure we're clear, so everybody understands, this is not debating, I mean, and I know you know this, but just for everybody else's entertainment, I guess. All this is, is acknowledging what the P and Z committee has recommended or not recommended. This is not necessarily saying we would agree or disagree, it's merely acknowledging receipt of their recommendation. Before a vote would be cast, there would be a discussion that would take place before any vote would be cast on our part. Just to clarify, just so we understand. We can have a discussion here on it if you'd like.
Well, and then I just want to be on the safe side then, too. Do you want us to do any discussion now, or before the board action requests under Mr. Wallace's report?
Actually, I don't believe that item is.
Not on the agenda.
Just a minute.
So that one was pertaining to.
Yes, I don't believe that item appears on the agenda this evening, as that was originally shipped off to the attorney for the client that was here. It will appear on the January board meeting, the first board meeting in January. So although you received the minutes and the recommendation from the zoning board, that item is not on this agenda this evening.
If you'd like, but I'm opposed to having a discussion regarding.
I'd like to have a discussion on it, too.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, and then we can reiterate that again at that time of the vote, because I know there's kind of a heated issue there, so trustee Gonzalez proceed to be booked.
Is Mr. Patterson or anybody here from?
I don't believe they are because they didn't anticipate a vote on the issues in there.
Okay. So, and I know Mr. Holston and I have, you know, we've been talking about this frankly for about a year now, and I can see that the vote, even though it was favorable recommendation, it was very clearly a point of contention with them, too, if it was, you know, four ayes and three nays. So I'm wondering what the discussion was, or how they voted, and I know there was, with some modifications made, you have a security guard there. Were you at that meeting?
Yes, ma'am, I was. I was not, I was at the first meeting where it was put off as chair, and the second meeting as chairman. There was some contentious issues. I'm a little hung up on the security guard alone because I don't think it's practical. I'd be surprised if he does it. Do you know what idling, I had to do with, concerned with refrigeration, Mr. Wallace, correct me if I'm wrong, refrigeration units. I did uncomment at the meeting because that was my public comment time had already gone, but that doesn't make sense to me, and in all fairness to them. We have refrigerated units behind us at Jacobson on all night, all the time, and you can't hear them. And I think it would be unfair to ask them to do something that we don't ask other people in the area to do. Refrigerated units don't make that much noise, but.
Okay, but is that, would that include the refrigerated units that's not technically idling on, though, is it? Because it's just the refrigeration units.
Well, it was specifically discussed, and I don't see in the notes here, Mr. Wallace, where it's mentioned here, but it was specifically discussed and they specifically agreed to it under a lot of pressure from the board. But I think it's not practical to do that.
Well, they also indicated that there would be plug-ins available to keep their.
Correct.
Their vehicles.
Instead of idling.
Electrically plugged in.
So they would have to.
Right, so the premise in the no idling was substantiated by the fact that they were supposedly going to have plug-in service available to the prolonged parking.
And trustee Holston is correct, as well as the mayor, plug-in vehicle, or plug-ins for the vehicles would eliminate the necessity to idle the tractors themselves, and as trustee Holston has pointed out, the idling here is really referencing any reefer units or refrigeration units, and trustee Holston has stated his stance on that.
The fact is Patterson, and through his counsel and everything, had agreed to these conditions, as impractical as they are, it's a special use because of the type of usage there. So if you're looking for the opportunity to go back at some point in the future and say, listen, you're not living up to what you stated was part of your agreement.
So, and I can only go back, and yes, I wasn't at this meeting, that's why I wanted to have that discussion about it, because I do remember several conversations over the past twelve months about this. And it wasn't have to do with the idling, but I know the security guard, because originally they had presented cameras, that they were going to have cameras on site, and, you know, we asked, you know, who's going to be monitoring those cameras? If you got any, pardon the pun, shenanigans or something going on there, if they're watching them in Florida, how is it that we're going to be able to, you know, keep track?
Even if you have a single manager for the facility, even if he's living there at the facility, which it's not known for that, that's one person, and they got to take a break, you know, so you're not going to have twenty-four seven monitoring unless you have some, and in a small facility like that, I agree with trustee Holston, it's impractical to expect that you're going to have truly twenty-four seven security guard, you know, provision, because they got to take breaks, and it's not practical, it's his business model, not ours. So, but if he's agreeing to this, that's his contingency, so he's acknowledging them.
And I acknowledge his acknowledgement. My question was not having a security or a security guard that's twenty-four seven, that's his business model. My question is further than the camera monitoring, and then the other thing that we had talked about many months ago is, you know, not even the overnight truck idling, but the folks staying in the trucks overnight.
That was discussed at length, and they're absolutely not going to be allowed. They're, it's a drop-off, they're a drop-in to leave, very clear, we're very clear on that.
Was it repairs also brought up about, repairs on the facility there?
No, repairs on facility, although they could rent off the space for the, the space inside could be used for different things.
But they shouldn't be using it out the backyard, so to speak, for.
That's correct.
Repairs.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think that, first of all, a lot of these questions, which are good questions, will be answered when you see the actual special use ordinance, because it is much more definitive than the cursory notes that we have from the zoning board.
Okay. I've got it, and that's all I wanted to.
And additionally, the attorney and Mr. Patterson will be here at that meeting.
Okay.
And so you can, you can ask them directly and suffice your own curiosity before you take your vote.
Fair enough.
And just as a point of clarification, two of the adjacent property owners were present at the last two zoning meetings. They, it was, in my opinion, quite clear that they were not in favor of any zoning remap, where it would be changed to an M two or anything like that. They were more inclined to accept, as the neighboring property owners, to see it as a special use that has contingencies that can be rescinded if there's a failure to meet those.
My understanding was there was going to be no change application for the zoning?
They, I think they rescinded that request.
Well, that's correct, but it does indicate on the application here, that I remember eight zoning change application, M two is pending. My understanding was they were going to withdraw.
That would be for the application, again, once the, once you have the ordinance before you in the special use, that ordinance will specifically state that the map amendment request has been withdrawn.
Right. Now, my concern is going to be that they came before the zoning board and the village board a year ago. We gave them what they asked for, a year went by, they have not done anything.
And they agreed with the span of the expectations.
Now, correct. And now, now they're saying they want fifty-six, which, whether they get it or not, they're obligated under this agreement to have a security guard, whether they have one or fifty there.
And if that's not cost effective for the business model, that's what they agreed to, and.
Let's say it's succeed, not fail.
Agreed. Agreed.
So, just, I think we should be prepared to, for those of us that have not studied this, that go back and study, the zoning minutes were pretty good as well, and we want to be prepared to talk about it, because there will be some questions on it.
And I believe that there was a year ago, when it got from P and Z to the board at the time, Bill, Doug, Jim, you may recall this, that we even brought up about the cameras as trustee Gonzalez had indicated, that we wanted to make sure that there was a provision for the police department to potentially have the ability to look in on those cameras if they desire to, or view of the site. So, and there again, there's no stipulations that indicate how many cameras, no, any of that kind of stuff, so could have one camera, could be facing I-57, it's worthless, but, you know, we didn't stipulate exactly what we wanted, but there was that general expectation that had been put out there and they agreed to. That was a year ago. Now, if you want to restate that again for the next situation here, then we need to restipulate that, hopefully prior, if you have points of interest like that that should be included, get those to the administrator so the attorney can include those for discussion and possible consideration in that, if necessary, so that we don't have to kick it down the road another month or whatever else.
Yeah, and then, so I guess my biggest question thing was the security guard versus cameras, or both, or?
I would think they'd have cameras regardless.
Well, I would think, but there would go the assume thing, and.
Well, again, again, you're right, so if you'd like that to be presented through the attorney to have some consideration like we, that agreed to the year prior, and actually have it written into the agreement, that's fine. Can I get a consensus of the board that's a favorable expectation that there would be?
I think the requirement should say twenty-four seven security.
Plus.
Which one?
Plus, any cameras that they have on the facility should be accessible by local police.
Well, I think what Dave said, too, you know, whether the camera secured or not both, even if that's in there one way or the other than all of our pages are covered.
Yeah, I guess my hangup would be as a business manager myself, managing a warehouse over in that area, I don't feel like it's a police responsibility to monitor my facility. We monitor our facility.
And you've got a little different situation there, especially foreign trade zone and all that sort of thing, but.
Do we have any other situations in the village where the police monitor somebody's property?
They drive to the truck stops, they control the different parking lots and things of that sort, so, in a sense, yes.
If we do.
But if there's, if it's a gated facility, and we don't have a security, should our police then also have access to, in that situation, to be able to have a scan card to be able to get in if they need to? I don't know, I mean, the fire department's going to need to have access to get in there if there's a truck actually on fire back there, without knocking the gates down.
Yeah, but I completely agree with the fire department. My concern would be that the police department would take responsibility for providing security.
No, no, but I'm just saying that as a cursory review, to make sure that there's not riffraff, if you will, going on, you know, there's not.
Shit.
Yeah, whatever her name is, visiting the parking area.
Mr. Mayor, just as a matter of protocol, the ordinance that it was originated from the P and Z meeting under the special use has been formulated, that will be on the agenda at the January eighth meeting. Based on the questions that the board of trustees and the mayor asked, should there be any amendments to that ordinance? You could certainly pass it with those approved amendments as needed, and that would suffice, because you will have the property owner and council here as representation, I'm sure you can finalize everything at that point.
But as a point of clarification, so that it can be as much of a prepared in advance as possible, twenty-four seven security, yes?
Yes.
Cameras available for review by the police, if they have any, of the parking lot area itself, you know, the parking area out back, I mean, you're not talking about indoor buildings and stuff like that.
I don't think that needs to be in the ordinance, but at least we can have conversations with them with their ideas on that one.
Well, they agreed to it a year prior, so.
I think we really want that, though, because if there is an incident, we want our police to be able to look at that video.
I'm just asking for your attendance. That's fine. Chief, how do you feel about it?
They did agree to do that a year ago, and I think we probably should continue with that plot of, yeah, let's have access to the video.
Okay.
Yeah, my question is, they agreed to it a year ago, and they haven't done it.
Well, but they never implemented it either.
They've been running the property, and they haven't run it up.
They haven't done anything in there.
Yeah, not as, not as a truck use, as a truck facility, they have not.
And they weren't.
And that special use has gone to the wayside because they did not execute it within a year.
Correct.
So there is no special use on that property. This is the new one that's coming before you. So on January eighth, again, if you want to stipulate that you want it monitored, I will say that they have formally advised the village that there is a caretaker for the property locally here, so we did get that on file as well, but I'm sure that all your questions and concerns could be addressed when they're here in person, and certainly you can amend the ordinance as it sits in front of you, so that you can take care of business that evening.
Yeah, the second part is, I'd like to, you know, I do believe it's not fair to ask them to turn the reefers off, that's, that's a potential, that's going to impair them from getting business.
I don't think anybody asked them to turn the reefers off.
They did. No, it isn't part of the record. And they agreed to it, I don't think at that time, they understood what they were agreeing to, but I think that would be a dangerous situation relative to trying to get them business, and there's no reason to do it. Reefers do not make noise nowadays.
Especially if they're plugged in.
Yeah.
So the issue comes back to the idling versus being plugged in.
Right. I think, no, absolutely, but having a refrigerated unit, keep the unit on, again, Jacobson does it all the time next door to us, you don't hear it.
So reefers would be based on plug-in only, not based on sitting there idling in order to.
Well, you just covered it, but my question was, as I listened to all this discussion, do all trucks have the ability to plug in? Can't you answer that? No, in other words. It's a diesel for charging, but we're talking about refrigerated units where you have to have a, you have to keep the refrigerated unit going to be able to keep the product inside. I understand it, but what I'm saying is, are there any trucks that you have to have an engine run to give it the power? Your knowledge is rough. It's all plugged in. Okay, that's my question. You don't use it to turn it on.
Right, so based on the fact that we've had the discussion regarding this, are we okay to accept the, to acknowledge the receipt of item D five?
So you just needed a motion, right?
I just needed a motion to approve receipt and acknowledgement of item D five.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay, so that's Gonzalez and Gray. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, if you'll permit me, we have an attorney here pertaining to a lawsuit with the village, and I'd rather us pay for him to sit here another half hour while we go through the rest of the meeting. I would appreciate if we could defer to the executive session now to address the matter. So if we can jump ahead to the executive session now pertaining to matters of litigation.
Make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so that's Pop and Gray.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Time is six fifteen.
We're starting from the executive session, entertain a motion to, or I guess we just said a roll call, roll call, sir.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston. Horn.
Yes.
Pop. And Gonzalez.
And if I could, if people were wondering why we were laughing on the way out of the room, clerk Hager, what was that coming to you?
I never met the attorney before, so I said, it was really cold today. How cold was it? I saw an attorney with his hands in his own pockets. Anyway.
Item number E, court's report.
Your Honor, I met with the administrator and the village attorney to go over the executive session minutes, which are open for approval or review and release. The three of us went through those minutes, and I guess we can review those in the executive session if the trustees would like. I've got a couple of copies, but we thought it was silly to print them off for all of you, but if you want copies, I've got several copies, and I can make more copies. We can go over briefly what's in them if you'd like, but it was really pretty straightforward.
You can refer back to them. Do you want to do the?
Later tonight.
That's fine. That's fine. We can reiterate executive session. That's fine.
And the second item is Open Meetings Act and FOIA certification for officials. When I took office, I originally contacted the county clerk, and they gave me some information, which had, since been told was incorrect. The assistant administrator contacted the Illinois attorney general, and the attorney general's office has stated that once you take your exam for either one of these certifications that follows you, and it's good for life, with the exception of the FOIA officer, but as we've gone through our records here in the village, contrary to what we've been told, the handout that you have, those are the only records that we have. So there are a number of trustees and P and Z commissioners, newly appointed people that have not qualified for the Open Meetings Act, which is required. The FOIA is optional. So if you have taken the test and you don't have the certificate, you can go on the website, which is supplied on the bottom of the form, and you should be able to print it out still if you have your password, and if you don't have the password, you should be able, please, you should be able to contact that office, but worst case is you'll have to take the test again. It's all a waste.
Yeah, I know that some of you have taken this, even though that might be listed that you haven't, it's, with the transition of office, courts, et cetera, not everything was necessarily conveyed, and it should have been, so.
Mine will transfer.
Yours will transfer, we just need you to reprint. So if you go to the A G.
We need a copy of the form for our records.
If we have on hold, I can.
That's fine, or if you go back to the A G site, you can re-log in, and it'll be on file, you can, you can actually update your current office and reprint it with your current office on there as well, so.
I've taken mine as Alfred, David, and David.
You all have names.
All right.
That's kind of important, right?
Thank you very much. Mr. Minister.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, sorry for having such a long agenda. Item F one on the agenda is ratification of the telephone poll taken for the Mulligan's request to open early. Attached to that, you can see the letter requesting that permission, which has already taken place on December first, and you see the attached results of the telephone poll. It is up for ratification.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the request that confirms the phone poll. That would be my motion.
Second.
Pop and Gonzalez?
Or.
Okay, so Pop and Holston.
Roll call, you ready?
Yes, please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item F two on the agenda has to do with the two thousand and thirteen tax levy. You can see before you is the tax levy ordinance. The municipality is suggesting, and our staff is increasing that the municipal, is suggesting that the municipality increase the tax rate, the municipal tax rate, by four point nine 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 percent. What that does for us is, if you recall, the past two years, the levy has been flat, we have not raised the municipal portion of the tax levy, and if you approve this ordinance as before you tonight, that would account for a sixty-one thousand four hundred and forty-five dollar increase to our operating funds. I'm happy to explain where those $64,000 or $61,000 is, is located. $6,500 of that would go to audit expense. $10,400 would go to IMRF. $75,000 would go to, I'm sorry, $7,500 would go to liability insurance, workers' compensation, and the remaining amount of $37,020 would go to the police pension fund. The reason that so much of it has gone to the police pension fund is being a new fund and with the existing officers at the ages that they are and the years of service that they have, the actuarial has reported that that fund is significantly underfunded, which is not unusual for a new fund. The state Department of Insurance tax levy suggested amount was $328,000, which of course we could not even come close to. And the actuarial amount was $196,000. And basically, we have raised that amount to, it was $169,000, I'm sorry for the actuarial. We have raised that amount to $192,020. I would like to say that as it pertains to the police pension fund, it is one of those funds that it's a pay me now or pay me later fund. It is the liability of the municipality to make sure that that's funded. So, that's why we took any excess amount that we could possibly come up with and we put it into the police pension fund. This levy does not provide for an increase in any general corporate purposes, police protection, civil defense, or EMA. And it also has social security being underfunded by $78,500, of which will have to come out of the corporate fund to, to support that. So, before you, you have the tax levy ordinance, which is up for adoption. I would also like to state that the levy needs to be filed by the last Tuesday of December, which happens to be New Year's Eve. We would like to get it filed before that if possible. If it is your pleasure to pass this levy, that's what's before you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have a couple. Is the, these levies, does it hamper our borrowing or liability for the village?
In a, in a roundabout way, they could, but we are not. I would say the more direct answer is no, because we are certainly staying within the 5% cap that is allowed by all collar counties. And because we have held our levy flat for the two previous years, you know, we don't have, we have a pretty good positive cash flow. We don't have a lot of debt service out there.
I've got a question pertaining to the police pension fund. You were talking about that being a pay now, pay later.
Yes, sir.
Certainly, we are behind the eight ball because of the newly developed funding there. The more we pay, as much as we can pay on the front end now, it does also, not like there's a lot of interest out there, but it does actually accrue interest you know, as compared to waiting until we're actually having to deal with that later. We'd have to put in more later if we don't do it now.
You are, you are correct, Mayor. And consequently to that is the sooner they get to certain break points, it allows them by law to invest in other vehicles, other than just simple interest accounts.
More financially rewarding.
Exactly.
Right. And I know we had talked about it, is there a possibility we could pool with Cream or Peetaton or one of the other towns that might be in a similar situation of, from what I understand, we are not able to do that.
That is correct. You cannot do that.
Any other discussion on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item F2, the 2013 tax levy.
So moved.
Second one.
All right, I need an ordinance number.
That'd be 1668, Your Honor?
No.
I have a sixty, yeah, 1667. We'll go with 1667. Would that be quite suffice?
Sixteen what?
One sixty. You have to do a motion.
Yes, I do motion. Holston, second. Was Gonzalez?
True.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F3 before you is a Series 2005 bond abatement ordinance. Each year we go through this process. You will have three of these ordinances for different series of bonds. We abate the amount of the bond because we have made payments on that bond over the previous year. And so, now we need to abate the amounts of those bonds that have been paid so that the county can set the debt service amount for those bonds for future payments. So, item F3 is a bond abatement ordinance for Series 2005 bonds. And then we'll take an ordinance number.
Sure.
Can I just ask a question, Mr.?
Please.
In each of these abatements then, the different ordinances and the years, are each one attached to a specific TIF district then?
No, there, each is a, is a different series. So, two of the bonds, I believe the, excuse me, the 2005 and the 2009 series bonds are related to TIF District Number Two, because that was a front-loaded TIF district. And the Series 2010 is kind of a hybrid bond and that is a mixture of some expenses for TIF Two, as well as some general obligation bonds that the village had out. And I believe those bonds were for the police department and the water tower along I-57. Because of interest rates and so forth, I believe they consolidated that down in 2010 to achieve better efficiency on the money.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Make that motion.
Second.
Good. Pop, Horn, ordinance number?
That'd be 1668, Your Honor?
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Grasic? Sorry, isn't it here? Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F4 is the similar, same type of bond abatement ordinance for a Series 2009 bonds. And again, it, it's the same mechanism for the, for the ordinance that you just passed.
Any discussion on this? I move.
Okay. Second.
Holston and Gray? Ordinance number?
That'd be 1668, Your Honor?
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Item F5 is a Series 2010 bond abatement ordinance. And again, the same vehicle as previously.
Any other motion or ballot?
So...
I'm sorry. Gonzalez?
Yep.
And... Horn?
That'd be 1670?
Okay.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F6 is a development agreement with Graylar LLP for water main extension. If you recall, this was before the board, has a proposed development agreement. And that is to extend a water main from along Industrial Drive from Whiting Way up to Sunset Drive East and then north to the property line of Graylar, to the far property line of Graylar. This is now in written format and up for your review and approval. This has been sent to Graylar and we, in concept, they have agreed to that. I'm waiting to get their signed documents back. We're looking for authorization to have the mayor and the clerk sign this development agreement.
Is there somebody that's been occupied this way?
It, it is occupied now and that is one of the factors for moving this project forward. They need to provide, provide additional fire suppression equipment. And rather than spend the money to upgrade and support a private well, the village initially agreed that if they would take the money they would spend toward that, put it toward a water main extension, the village would further that endeavor with the use of TIF dollars. We will be able to place a recapture on that for any future tax to receive some of the dollars back into the TIF district as well.
I'll entertain a motion to approve it?
Make that motion.
Second.
Pop and Holston? Ordinance? An ordinance?
Just, just authorization for you and the clerk to sign there.
Yes, sir. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item F7 on the agenda is a payout request from TIF Number Three for B.C. Development. Attached, you have a, a letter making that request. The amount of the payment requested is $96,225. This payout has been calculated and checked based on the paid taxes and in accordance with the redevelopment agreement.
How many do you wish we have left on this one?
Probably, this will never come to fruition. The TIF district will probably reach its life expectancy before the amount is paid off.
Mr. Minister, if you don't mind, just give the trustees, a lot of them are new, give a little bit of background on the, or at least a summary of the letter you also sent to B.C.
Yes, sir. And for your information, I haven't said that yet because we're waiting for approval for the check.
Of course.
I'll send it at the same time.
But if you could just describe and make sure.
Yes, sir. What the mayor's referring to is B.C. Development, excuse me, is located on Emerald Parkway, which is just off Richland Avenue, south of Money Manhattan Road. Their development that have several incubator buildings and over the years have progressed to fill those buildings. And now, there is, it's come to a point where there are some infrastructure items that need to be completed in accordance with the, with the ordinances of the village and those have not been completed up to this point. And it is suggested that in my letter or in, with this payment, a letter will go to B.C. suggesting that they prepare and plan to fully execute the completion of their project, meaning they take care of the base coat of asphalt, they put the top coat of asphalt on, they correct any drainage issues, broken curbs and so forth, because they're operating pretty much at full capacity there. And it, that development has not been brought up to standards of the village ordinance. So, we're going to suggest that they have, they have plenty of time to prepare over the, over the winter here, as asphalt plants are closed, so they can hire an engineer, do whatever they need to do. And we would expect that to take place at the early part of the construction season so that we can reap the benefits of having a complete project. They can also reap the benefits of proper drainage and it meets a village code all the way around. So, that will be in my letter to them. As part of that, I believe that there's a part in the redevelopment agreement that requires them to be in compliance with all ordinances. The village usually takes a proactive approach on these things, but should push come to shove, future TIF payouts could become jeopardized for failure to take action.
That would be my question. If the redevelopment agreement exists, can we withhold this payment until it's dealt with improvements on the...
As I indicated, yes, trustee Gonzalez, he certainly could. However, early in the spring, prior to, prior to new administration, there was a meeting that had taken place with B.C. Development, where they had contemplated building an additional building. And in that, we suggested, the village suggested that once you submit the plans for that building, we will incorporate everything that needs to be done to be brought up to standard so that when you have the construction people out there, you only have them out there once, they take care of everything that needs to be done. Subsequently, that developed, that development, the additional building, did not come to fruition and that puts us in this position here. And in all fairness, if we said, "You need to get it done now", there's no way they could do it because asphalt plants are probably closed already. So, we're just suggesting that, you know, this, this letter of enticement or encouragement, I will say, will go along with them and we'll get them on...
To go to your point though, technically, we probably could withhold this, but in all fairness, as he indicated, giving them an ample heads up, if they don't have it resolved by this time next year, I would anticipate the board choosing not to do an additional payout until such times as they comply to that.
Well, gee, they're getting a payment of 1.26 million. They should be able to have the cash on that bill.
That's over ten year period.
Well, yeah, and as I indicated earlier, I doubt that they'll ever see the...
They're getting 96.
96,000.
Right. But there again, it's leverage for them to, especially when you get that accompanied with this letter that say, you know, they're getting this money as part of the economic agreement in the first place, but they're realizing this may be the last thing that they get if they comply with the commission. So, I think it's, it's fair, business friendly, and yet same time, I can hold them accountable to the expectations. So, ample warning, a year warning is kind of inadequate. So, okay, next. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need that? I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's Holston and Horn?
Horn?
Horn, Horn.
This is just a...
It's not an ordinance, it's just approval of this payout. It's correct. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F8 is also a TIF Three, TIF Number Three payout request from NAI Tifman. That property is, as the letter indicates, that property is located at 25850 South Richland Avenue. And the amount of the payout request is $739,732.95. Again, those calculations were checked against the redevelopment agreement and all taxes have been paid there. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that.
I, I do want to clarify a point. I need to give a nice question, but I want to clarify a point. These are all development agreements that are, we're merely honoring the original agreements. We're not, we're not renegotiating anything. It's what we're just simply agreeing to make the payments that had been established some, some years ago.
In the interest of full disclosure, this is the company that, or this company is the property that I work out of, so I will reclose myself for voting on this.
Fair enough.
So, and the letter that's submitted by Tifman, the amount is different than on your requested payment, do you know?
Yes, it is. It's because they do not understand how to figure the payout. Well, I would think they would want to. It actually gives them a little more money. But the reason, number one is just because this is the proper way to figure it. I double-checked that and checked with an outside authority. I also ran that by Darrell Bullen, our, our finance director. And I would like to say on all of these financial items, Darrell has been a valuable asset, very much involved as part of the transitioning of that, of that position. But getting back to this specifically, in the end, you generally end up doing an audit and we don't... and we don't want to end up owing once they find out something was calculated incorrectly. So the amount that, of seven thirty-nine, seven thirty-two, ninety-five, is the correct amount that they should receive. Thank you for the question.
Motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Gonzalez and Pop?
trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Mr. Holston, your statement.
Can I just clarify for me? Four votes is adequate, or does it require a three-fifth majority or something?
And if trustee Holston abstained, that goes with the majority.
No, I don't issue the question. But we're still.
Yes, you are.
And just in favor, I'll, I'll throw a vote in favor if there's no issue.
Thank you. Item F nine is a proposed capital improvement plan. This is really for information only to the board. There'll be some time before our next meeting. You may want to peruse this, look at some of the items that have been noted there. And at some point, I would suggest that, that we collectively sit down and try and put together a capital improvement plan to move us forward. Once this is digested to a certain degree, the mayor may want to appoint an ad hoc committee, and it's entirely up to him, but it's for informational. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those at any time, doesn't have to be here at four, we can call at any time. Item F ten is a resolution to use motor fuel tax dollars for the purchase of bulk salt. We do this every year, it authorizes us to, it says, use motor fuel tax dollars for bulk salt purchase. We like to use the motor fuel tax as opposed to our general fund tax of road and bridge, simply because motor fuel has a lot of restrictions on it, on what you can spend it on, and this is one of those restrictions, and it's just an easy way to spend some of that money. And we can, it keeps our budget free to spend it on other things that may not qualify for motor fuel tax.
I'll make that motion.
Good question. Pop and Gray?
trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Yes. We'll throw resolution number one.
Question?
No, I was just asking.
Last question. For information purposes.
Yes, sir.
This is authorizing to spend the money, but will you be going out and getting quotes for this, or how are you?
Actually, we have already received a quote. This is based on a state bid purchase contract of which we partake.
Can we go to motion number twenty-three dash ten?
Thank you. Item F eleven on the agenda is a resolution for appointment of an I.M.R.F.-authorized agent. The reason for the change is just simply that we have a finance director, and Daryl Bullner should be the authorized agent for I.M.R.F. They won't do that without authorization from the municipal government in the form of a resolution.
Is there a second individual's name, or just one primary contact?
One primary contact is totally listed.
I would say the motion to approve that.
So move.
Second.
Okay, Gonzalez and Pop?
Your motion.
Twenty thirteen dash eleven.
Yes, please.
trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you for inviting me. At this point, I would like for Chief Sivkar for his monthly report.
Two red items. One is, is we recently received a report of a burglary to a motor vehicle. And investigating this, we arrested three youthful offenders. And during the course of the investigation, we found out that they'd done twenty-nine more burglaries. Now, the reason we're able to determine that that was the number is because we took them to the places where they'd done it, and they pointed them out. And we've returned as much property as we can so far. But the reason I'm bringing it up is because that means twenty-nine people who were victimized did not report it to the police department. And we will not be able to help you if you don't tell us that something happened. The key here is, is when we were doing our interviews, one of the things that was brought up was everybody who was victimized left their car doors unlocked. Number one. Number two, they left something of value visible, in other words, phone, wallet, something like that. And number three is, is even though these cars may have been parked in a driveway with the light on outside of the house, these offenders did not attempt to go burglarize anything unless they saw the lights were out in your house. So we would ask everybody to make sure that if you're going to have your lights off, that that means your car should be locked, you're going to keep it outside, because we don't want anybody being. Are we moving forward on this case with everybody? Yes, we are. And are we getting as much return as we can? Yes, we are. Are these kids going to see some time? Hopefully. But just as a matter of information, please lock your doors. It's a, you know, we live in a great town, but there are people that are just not very nice out there. There are evil people, we need to be aware of that. Number two is, is we're going to offer a women's empowerment through self-defense course here. Ruben, what's the date for us? It'll be February to March. I'm going to teach it. For those of you that don't know, I'm a seventh-degree black adult. Have been in the martial arts for a number of years, and in my thirty years in law enforcement, this course is going to encompass not only our hands-on techniques, but when self-defense is applicable, what the law says you can and can't do, and how we can make people more aware and safer as they move along. And I would encourage anybody that's eighteen to eighty-nine, if you want to come in there, that this is the time to do it.
I'm going to open it.
I'm going to open it.
And we're going to do it here or in a?
It'll be at the right.
Chief, are there any new laws that people should be aware of coming up statewide or anything else?
Well, first of January, everybody needs to understand that if you're not on Bluetooth, it's no longer a village ticket, it's a statewide. So everybody should be cautious about, you know, using your phone in the car. The laws changed, the penalties changed, and it's something to pay attention to.
We do have a car dealer in town, if your car's got Bluetooth, they can upgrade your radio or your car.
Chief, I think it's obvious, but the question, the twenty-nine burglaries, were all here in Moni?
Yes.
Chief, the Bluetooth law, will that apply toward the village officials, police department, car?
It applies to everybody, and there's certain exemptions in the law, the best thing to do is to go look at it for yourself.
Do you intend to have the police department with Bluetooth, my question?
Yes, well, we're going to, all of our guys should already be using Bluetooth, if they're not, I can get on them. Somebody just has to tell me that they're not.
Okay.
I know you're probably asking what public works too, so.
No, sir.
That is it, chief?
That is it, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Crizal?
Sure. I guess you hear your name. Good evening. First item of business, the repeater that the board previously passed approval on is installed and is working now, which gives us radio communications throughout the village with EMA and with Public Works being able to communicate is a plus. So that is installed and is operational. The repeater's installed at the new tower, so we shouldn't have any issues. Backup batteries, everything's in place for any sudden, non-disaster and normal use. Second item is, I want to report that on behalf of trustee Gonzalez spearheading this operation, we've had thirty trees installed in North Parkway that has completed our fall planting. There were a mixture of red sunset maple, October glory maple, and autumn blaze maples, all within our village ordinance on parkway trees installed throughout the community. Again, thirty trees compared to what we removed was not a number, but it's a dent we started. And an extra appropriation that you passed will be able to apply more money to be able to start replacing trees. And last but not least, the snow season's upon us. I want to remind the residents, there's no parking on the streets after a two-inch snowfall, and that we also have an ordinance in place, number eleven sixty, available at the village hall if you need it, that prohibits the deposit of snow or ice upon the public streets, highways and sidewalks. So I would ask that the residents do not shovel, snowblow, or put plowing into the middle of the street to clean their own residence off or to block the sidewalks with big mounds of snow. It's prohibited, there's an ordinance and a general ordinance ticket, you'll be fine for it. Okay, that's it.
And as Director of Emergency Management and Community Liaison, Ruben?
Good evening, everyone. It's an update for Emergency Management. We've, in the process of having background checks done with our volunteers, they've been sent over to the police department, we're scheduling fingerprinting, and we should have a team in place by early January. We'll go through an interview process, interview panel, and at that point, training will begin. Recently, I had the opportunity to go to Diamond in Coal City as a guest with the state police and with the Rhode County Emergency Management Agency just to see how an emergency management team operates during a disaster. It was very informative, very sad, a lot of devastation, but it was an eye-opener just for our village. I also want to note right at this point, that in the event of a disaster, the village hall is open, we did open during that storm, the police department is also open, twenty-four-seven, as well as St. Boniface is also offered their basements. We, in light of these, in the recent storms, FEMA has cut loose of some funding. There is a CERTS grant that we applied for actually yesterday. And we're one of six communities that have been put in for this money. And it's to train actually citizens, residents of the village. It's the CERTS program, which is Community Emergency Response Team. And what they'll do is provide training to the actual residents. Moni, and equipment will be given, backpacks, and there'll be some training in just how the normal citizen will respond in the event of a disaster. And then put teams in place. So they would work in, and you're sitting with an EMA program, an EMA department in any municipality throughout the nation. This is a program that's nationwide. The thrust is, has been launched after, after recent disasters throughout the nation. This money is out there, and these groups are rising throughout the country. So we have put in for, for this grant. And what we'll do is partner then with, with the Rhode County Emergency Management Agency. And then this also opens up opportunities in the future to receive grants because we're partnering through this grant. Also, what I've got is information on our toy drive. You've seen it on our marquee, we have a toy drive through December the fourteenth. Residents are asked to partner with us, local businesses such as Shub, Mitsubishi, and Cremoni School District. We are helping six immediate families from Moni that are, have been identified as serious, and they've been sponsored by local organizations, businesses. And then there's eighty other children that have been identified as well that these gifts will go to. So we're collecting here, we ask that the gifts would be unwrapped and placed up until Saturday, and then the gifts are, will be taken over to the school district, and they'll be wrapped by the school district and given out to the families. This Saturday also, fourteenth, is our Moni Christmas event. We partner with the Chamber of Commerce and the local churches from Moni. And it'll start at five o'clock, we'll have the annual lighting of the Christmas tree. And then from there, the community will move over to the Moni Education Center across the street. And at that point, and we'll give out gifts to the kids, and there'll be snacks, refreshments, and then a concert at the area churches. Finally, the chief had mentioned about our fitness program. Starting February the third, we'll start our self-defense for women. And also, we have, offer a eight-week class, offering karate for kids. And that'll run from February the third through, I believe it's April the first.
What are the ages for that?
The ages, our kids, at the age of eight, I believe, until sixteen. And we, we don't have a pricing just yet, but it'll be somewhere in the area of about five dollars per class. So roughly forty dollars or so. Also, our fitness programs will begin on January the sixth. And this time, in this session, we'll also have like sessions as well, Zumba and Fit for Seniors. We're also looking at doing the Up Boot Camp. And that ends my report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, my name is Director Bullner, I would like to defer your reports until they're fully acclimated into the position. And that concludes our reports, thank you very much.
It's a little bit overwhelming for someone to be there for power, it's been three weeks now.
I guess, but I must say that already we can see the results and feel the pressure being lifted, and it's very nice.
Thank you. Okay. Under the mayor's agenda, I have item number one. There was, in review of our terms of office for the police commission, I indicated, I was aware of the fact that we had one that had expired. Review that, I've identified somebody I'd like to see in acquisition that I believe would be very attentive to the need to get that implemented. Again, this police commission works somewhat autonomously from, not like planning and zoning where it actually integrates, you know, referral of information up to the board. The police commission is a little bit more autonomous than that. So it needs to be, we need people that are a little more self-starters, if you will, in that area as well. I mean, we like that everywhere, but I'm just saying it's very important there. So I would like to make the recommendation of Sid Ruzback to fill the third position of the police mission. And I would think consent approval of the board, of course. So move.
Second.
Okay, Holston, Gonzalez. Can I get a roll call please?
trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
Okay.
That's great, sir.
I believe it would be appropriate to have a swearing in of the new official in that regards. Clerk Hazer, would you? Mike?
I'd be delighted.
First of all, I wasn't aware of this being happening tonight, I would address more per.
You're close to your, to your Christmas, but.
Why don't you raise your red hand, stand on one leg. Repeat after me. I, say your name.
I, Sid Ruzback.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the office of member of the police commission.
Office.
Of member.
Member of the police commission.
Of the village of Moni.
Of the village of Moni.
County of Waukegan.
County of Waukegan.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Before said.
Before said.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And then faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of, excuse me, the duties of the Office of Plan Commission, that's wrong.
The Office of Plan Commission.
There you go. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Your elections.
I think that's the most I've heard out of Clerk Hager since he's been in office.
Now we know why.
It's cold in here.
Good job, man.
You're original, aren't you?
Do you like to stand on one foot? No, thank you. Good job. Next on the agenda. On your tables, I presented a draft, obviously with pending the approval of Mr. Ruzback, but in review of the committee assignments, we identified the fact that there were some anomalies where they were not consistent with state statute pertaining to the expiration needed to be in line with the end of the fiscal year, the billings, which also coincide with political cycles. I think part of that is because they don't want to have people make appointments right before they leave office, so they want to allow for certain aspects of that to be afforded to newly elected mayors, whatever you want to call it, to have some introduction of personnel in the commissions and committees. That being said, in review of the commission committee assignments, I am presenting a summary based on previous assignments, aligning their dates with where they need to be. You know, so with the planning commission, there's seven positions, but they're on five year terms, thereby you should never have more than two. You should have five that are, I'm sorry, you should have three that have a single, they stand alone as far as their expiration year. You should have two that are in tandem. So that's where you get your seven, so you have basically one, two, three, four, five, and then one, two, you know what I'm saying, so you'd actually have. So that being said, based on the expiration dates that we did have, based on the openings that we had and the recent assignments, I'm presenting this for an affirmation. We've had a problem in the past where there has historically not necessarily been a clear maintenance of the list of this regard and there's been confusion regarding things even like with the Police Commission. We heard that there was somebody that may have been appointed at one point, but we couldn't find records of the minutes or things of that sort. So I'm going to ask this be, with the board's approval, I'm going to ask that this be added to the minutes as a matter of public record, as a point of reference, and if the attorney feels irrelevant at our next meeting, we'll simply either have a resolution or something acknowledging this as a, at this point in time, kind of a thing. Otherwise, at least by putting it in the minutes, we can at least go back to this and identify as people we have replaced in the future, we know where they go. Just to be clear, on the Police Punching Review Board, there are three additional members of that, but they are outside the scope of the village, they are within the scope of the police department, police officers. So the ones that we have listed here only pertain to the ones that the village has oversight of.
I guess I'm going to just have one question. These terms that are listed here on all of them, are the dates are listed when they expire or when they become?
When they expire.
So I will just make a point and say it looks like two of them expired April thirtieth, two thousand twelve.
Correct.
So we need either renewments?
Well, not necessarily, by ordinance, they stay in office until such time as they are either replaced or you could renew their terms, but you don't have to. So if I understand correctly, administrative rules, that they can stay in office until such time as they, they're, it's determined that you've ordered.
Successors are appointed.
Right. So it's, and there was some question, I know we had talked about before, you know, with previous administration, that it seemed like there was too many that were expired terms, but in all reality, in review of that with the administrator, the ordinance actually stipulates they stay in office until such time as a successor is appointed in those positions. I don't have any problem with those people being in office, I don't have any reason to make a request for change of order in the other. They're in office, I'm content that the offices are filled. As a matter of fact, one of those, you know, we'll talk about in just a minute here.
And I just wanted to state that it took us this long to get this figured out and in an effort to stay on cycle. The reason those haven't been filled for the two thousand twelve expiration dates is it gives the mayor an opportunity to get in cycle with the May first general appointments and so those will just stay expired terms until May one, at which time the mayor makes time to fill them at that point. Puts everything kind of on cycle and additionally.
But so those renewal dates, just to be clear, add five to whatever date you see there?
Correct.
So the twelves that end up being seventeens, if they were ever to be.
The other side of that, Mr. Mayor, my good.
Yes, please.
Having served on the zoning committee along with Heidi, it becomes a club over somebody's head when they're waiting month to month to see if they're going to be reappointed or what their status is. I think this is a year and a half, particularly since one of these is a person I suspect you're going to want to do something with. I think it would be behooves to ask for your recommendation about whether you'd like to reappoint them or whether you want to continue to hold a stick over their head.
Or just the?
And not that you are, by the way, but previous administrations have been accused of that.
No.
Just to have a conversation with them that you're unaware of that and?
I haven't had a dialogue with them because it was not a concern for me because as far as I can certainly hear people in office by ordinance.
As former chair of the zoning, I have, and I know it's a concern for all of them and I think it's unfair to have a term that's been expired well over a year and not know what your status is because you literally do not know what your status is, you can be replaced at any moment at the whim potentially of this administration. I think.
At the same token, it's, you know, how it doesn't expire term and they still get a village stipend every month and that, you know, I don't want to place the village in a bad spot.
Or not, by ordinance, they continue in their position until they resign or they're replaced.
Understand that.
So, I mean, there's nothing incorrect about the stipend or anything else, they're fulfilling their duties.
Stipend only comes if you attend a meeting.
I understand.
So they're legally engaged in their positions.
Absolutely. But it's just very difficult, having talked to the members, both previous and current, I know that.
I haven't, I haven't had that conversation with the two members that you're referring to here, but is it the board's recommendation? I'm open to what you guys have to say here.
My recommendations, because those terms are expired, then we, that we listed, you give us a recommendation by next month of what you'd like to do. Particularly because one of them may be, you know, potentially leading that group. I think that whoever leads that group should be current, with the current term.
I understand. Is that a general consensus? Do you guys all feel the same way about that? I mean, I started the administrator, my ordinance, we were really implementing ones there. If you guys feel like I need to give them a little bit of comfort in their space, that's fine.
I definitely think you should.
Okay. Anderson? Trustee Gray, do you feel the same way or do you care what we do?
I mean, it's been a year and a half. I can't really figure that a person is all concerned like I might not be in planning the zoning next month. But I mean, if it eases their pain, then yeah, but I mean, really, I would hope that they have a lot better things to worry about than, oh my God, am I going to have, I mean, you know, I'm going to have a meeting and there's always enough time, get a phone call and say, well, there's no meeting this month, so don't worry about it. I don't think they really, I would hope that they have better things to worry about than if I'm still on this committee.
I, I understand.
And again, let's move forward to what you are leading to, whatever we're going to be speaking of in a few minutes and then go from there. And again, if, you know, if we want to look at it and ease their pain, you know.
I don't think the pain, Trustee Gray, is whether they're going to be in work, but when we're making decisions about zoning or what we do as trustee, you know, and in some cases, there might be indirect pressure to say, well, if you don't go the way I want you to this month, maybe I'll replace you.
And I guess, from my opinion, and just so we're having this dialogue, I don't see that as being an issue. I understand where you might feel that way, but the planning commission's responsibility is to make recommendations. The board has the opportunity to, with a higher majority, in some cases, it would be necessary, I believe, it takes more than just a simple majority if it's overriding the planning commission's recommendations. But there is that checks and balances, it's so that they can do the homework, they can do the studying and all that regard. And my say over what happens with all of that is tertiary in that regard, so.
Certainly no question in your integrity, sir.
Oh, thank you. But general consensus, would you guys like me to see, would you like to see me reaffirm these positions or merely allow them to continue the way, following the ordinance by itself?
Maybe so just they're aware of that ordinance and you're intent.
Okay. Or just to see maybe they're not comfortable with another five years, might need others. So, in which case, they might feel more awkward than to resign.
No, they've been doing a job for.
I think if you plan on keeping them on their current position, should renew their term, otherwise we'll do the advice and consent of.
Anderson, your recommendations. Mr. Pop?
I'm kind of concurring with everyone here. If I were outside, I'd want to be personal, that's what bothers me here.
That's not.
Because I have an opinion, and it's my opinion, it is kind of personal in respect. I would be more comfortable if I was on something if my term had expired legally, but the ordinance says it's okay to go on, I still wouldn't be comfortable with that.
Anderson.
I'd like to see that extended here, the black and white.
Anderson. Thank you.
I'd be more comfortable with that.
Just for a point of clarification, Mr. Administrator, on the extension of a term, do they have to get sworn in again or it's just a perpetuation of their?
Just a reappointment.
Just an extension of the current term?
If it's a reappointment as opposed to an appointment, my guess would be that it is just an extension, however, we can certainly check with council on that. And Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could recommend that if these terms are, that these terms, if they're meets with everyone's approval, that this is adopted simply by reference to be made part of the minutes so that we have a clear starting point for this.
Right. And then that is as of, as the date on the bottom of the, so that's as of today's date?
Correct.
So, so any changes that are recommended by the board would potentially generate a new document or not necessarily create a new document at a time, but it would just merely mean that this list would be updated and perhaps annually we should, you know, merely reaffirm the terms as a form of accountability to.
Yes, sir. And that's what I alluded to earlier, that that's why you're trying to get it on cycle with May because that's generally when the appointments take place annually.
Correct.
In May, so, but I totally understand.
Okay. All right, so as of today, as of this information we currently have available, this is, this is the best that we have been able to come up with. Can I get an affirmative confirmation, I guess? A motion to acknowledge or approve this as the current status of these terms?
Yes. Second.
Great. All right, roll call on it, please.
So this would be?
It'll be adopted as a.
G three is, is legit.
Correct, G three.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.
Going back to item number two, I did get these out of order, I apologize, I do too good to stay on task. I would like to make the recommendation, I've had the discussion with one of the planning commission members, that's got not necessarily the most time in the commission, but clearly the right potential to take the helm. And I've discussed with him that I would like to see him be the chairman for two thousand fourteen. And the motivation behind assigning it for a one-year potentially extended is I would like to see that as an opportunity to groom more than just one person to be in the position of leadership, you know, we may, I'm not sure that we would, but at this point, I've already had a conversation with him, the gentleman I referred to is Ed Gross, he was the acting chair for the last P and Z meeting, seemed to handle quite well. But it is possible, you know, a year from now, two years from now, I may want to recommend somebody else to step into that as well and let's not put a stick over somebody, Trustee Holston. Let's just try to groom additional people to be in positions of good leadership. So, that being said, I would like the board's favorable approval to acknowledge Ed Gross as the chair of the planning commission.
So?
Second. It would be Gonzalez and Holston?
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez, Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Thank you. I had done some research in response to Trustee Horn's concerns regarding the adjudicator and cost. I had found someone that was on par with the cost that we were receiving from the correct firm. However, they were not going to charge us a minimum. I believe it was, in talking to them as well as a couple others, it is standard for them to charge for their travel time, but not necessarily mileage. And that is, I guess, common practice with lawyers. I get away with lawyer jokes. But with the board's recommendation or approval or acknowledgement or whatever the case may be, Mr. Administrator, what would be, what is the formality if we're going to recommend or appoint somebody else to be the adjudicator if we were to do that? Is that a, just simply a?
A simple voice vote, your recommendation or approval. I would like to add that as a follow-up, I actually didn't know that this was taking place, but as a follow-up, I did provide Trustee Horn, I did follow up with his concerns and I provided him an answer, he may have some items for discussion.
Okay. So.
Well, I don't know what prices, price points you came up with, but I want to thank Mr. Wallace for negotiating with our current adjudicator and their fees. Previously, we were charged three hours, three hours at a hundred and sixty an hour and that was twice a month, plus their mileage or their driving time, not sure which one it was, travel expenses, mileage and their time. So we would get a bill every month that was costing us a thousand dollars, just over a thousand dollars per month to have this person come out to the village twice a month. Thanks to Mr. Wallace and negotiating with them, we've gotten the rate down to a flat fee rate of three hundred dollars per time they're here. They're also going to waive the, or they're going to absorb their own travel and fuel costs. So we're getting, our monthly bill reduced by four hundred and four dollars. Current, the old bill was approximately a thousand per month. It's, if we continue using this person, it would be six hundred dollars a month, that before, I guess, twice a month they come out here. So that's a good savings.
I believe it would be comparable, but I'm not looking to change, just for the sake of change. So if you're, if you're agreeable to, at this point, you know, if you're agreeable with the current adjudicator, just maintaining that position with the negotiated rates, then we don't need to necessarily look for a different adjudicator. I, the reason why I did some additional research is a result of the questions being asked, so.
Mr. Sipka? From, not from the point of view of cost, but from the point of view of what you feel like we're getting out of the current adjudicator, are we getting our money's worth?
She's a very competent attorney, she does her job and anytime we call, she's absolutely out of the phone with us giving us whatever information it needs, so, you know, I wouldn't complain about the service we proceed.
Okay. Thank you.
And then how many, at our hearings, we have this hearing several times a month, how many, how many cases does she have a hearing?
If there are cases here pending, it may only be two to three, maybe four people. This time, because of holidays. This time, because of holidays, there wasn't any hearings necessarily, but she's also responsible for signing all indications of liability for anybody who fails to appear and therefore is found liable in absentia. So, and that may be, could be a hundred inches of the time.
Right.
So Chief, she comes out regardless of whether there's any evolution?
Because we can't predict that somebody's going to be here or not. And in the cases when she is here, if there's, even if there's only three, she may very well be here in the courtroom, hearing those cases for over an hour dependent.
And still have the process of paperwork for the assets?
Right. Of course she is.
So I want to go back to that in a second, but pertaining to that, I guess if that's okay, then we'll just continue to use the current adjudicator. You guys are okay with that at this point? No need for a motion or anything else at that point, since we're just continuing the same. I would like perhaps one of the trustees that would be interested to review our ordinance violation, P ticket type, things like that, to review the rates that we're charging. In some cases to identify if they're effective. And I'm not sure of having volunteers, if nobody's interested in that, but just to review the rates that are out there on the books. I don't know that they've been reviewed anytime recently.
We haven't changed the baseline in a good number of years.
So it probably warrants at least a general review, perhaps take a little time with the chief to review that. It's not saying we're going to charge a lot more, but we just need to make sure they're relevant. You know, somebody's getting charged five dollars, and that's not the case, but every time their dog gets out, they have to care because it's only five dollars. You know, I mean, little things like that, we need to identify. I think there's some statutes that have been identified recently, that we've got to be careful that the way we even write our ordinances pertaining to, you can't say that this is your amount if you pay it by this date, now you have to set it for the full amount. But if you pay it by this date, it's a discount, so our ordinances need to be clarified to make sure that they're in line with the correct lighting on that. So if no trustees are interested, oh, trustee Horn? Trustee Horn, if you could just find the time to meet with the chief and review all the different rates and all that, that'd be great. And Clark Hazer, if you could simply add that into the official's report at some point?
Yes, sir.
I believe that's it for me at this point. We have the attorney's report, I believe the administrator will probably cover that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and under new business, we have an ordinance approving the variance filed by Christopher and Rachel Ozinski. And what you have before you is the, in ordinance form, is the variance from Title XI, Section One of the Village Code, which would allow a necessary structure to increase the height to nineteen point four feet at a property commonly known as sixty-six forty-six West Bradford Court. Is there any questions? I'll attempt to answer them.
Still moving. Any motion?
Thank you.
I'll second it for the discussion.
Okay. We can go to discussion this morning?
The ordinance number first.
Well, let's make sure we get approved. Okay, discussion.
Are there complaints or any more about it? I was at the zone nineteen foot high, I was there at P and Z for a while, but I had a.
Yeah, I was there for that entire meeting, there were some questions, but no complaints. And it's, there's several other homes in the area have similar, and so there's nothing out of the ordinary there.
I think the one complaint that I heard had to do with, they concerned about obstructing their person's view, but regardless of hot ball building.
There was an issue that has to do with the.
Placement?
The, the, what that community has in their own rules, which has nothing to do with the building.
Right, and all they're asking is to have a little bit taller facility there, and also questions came about whether it's comfortable or how they're going to use it. And the reality is, is whether, you know, and if they're running a business, I don't know, they're having new businesses, you know, and whatever that vibes by, you know, whatever, kind of things like that.
And these folks are here tonight if we have any questions, or anything, it's pretty standard.
I think the only complaints, if I recall, came about were not pertaining to the height, it's just one of the neighbors I think was concerned about the potential of the placement of the building, but our ordinance is not stipulating anything other than it has to be behind the main structure.
Right.
And if it requires a placement, so as long as it vibes by that and proper hard surface, you know, an approved surface going to and from that. So we have a motion to approve and a second to give further discussion?
Just to really put it in, Mr. Holston, you have seen any plans and the tract and everything of the structures?
They had the plans there tonight, they have, or they had them there that night, I saw that they have them here tonight. But, you know, they had their plans and everything was in order.
Would you like to see the picture?
I would love to see the picture, I love pictures. But this was ongoing in front of planning and zoning, and you made a favorable recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just. Was, that wasn't in, you know, like our ordinances or anything approved from before, so when was this approved?
I was not, this was after I looked before, but I was there that night, the last meeting.
So that was, I just. It wasn't currently, I was zoning already, that would have been good to know.
It was, it was in plans zoning, that was in a previous agenda, it was on the agenda, a consent agenda.
But this is an ordinance.
No, it was item number four.
Bradford, it said Birch Court on here, on the agenda, and this is Bradford Court, so which is it?
Bradford.
It is Bradford.
Bradford Court, okay.
The ordinance is correct.
So the, the agenda has a.
I'm agreeing though.
You're good. Would you guys like to come forward and?
Do you have a costume?
I don't have a mind, you have your mind.
Actually, I'd love to see the picture, so that would be lovely.
Trustee Horn and trustee Gonzalez.
You have the big version and the little version.
As they're walking up to the microphone, one additional thing is that in the planning zoning, all of the standards of issuance were met, as well as the intent, the reason for this was indicated to try and mirror as close to the residence peak as they could.
I think, believe the intent was to get the wife's car in the garage by later.
We made some room with the snow coming, so.
Now I recall some of the discussion, that's the Toolman.
Yes.
That's right.
The Toolman and the Christmas banner, display's almost done, so if you want to take children to come see a Christmas display, we're almost ready.
I, did I hear correctly that if you didn't get this second building?
We're not here to jeopardize marriages.
I think the only question that I believe was brought up, there was a question by one of the P and Z members was, does code allow for a second floor in a detached building? And I believe according to what the administrator can tell us, so.
But so long as it's residential, as long as it's storage and not somebody working up there.
That's correct.
It's not like a law department or something.
That came up in zoning and was discussed, and they answered that question.
Thank you.
Rokov?
I didn't catch the motion at second.
We did.
I made the motion.
And Pop?
I'll second.
Rokov, Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you remember on that motion?
That'd be sixteen seventy-one.
Thank you, thank you. How many more did you put on?
Took all down?
Yeah. What are I, official's report? I, I just want to reiterate, I know when it was back in May, we had discussed the way the official's report was going to work, and there might be some clarification on this. I know trustee Pop had brought up something, there's trustee Gonzalez had some things on there, once they're resolved, they're taken off. If they, if they come before the board and they're requested to have something as a topic, like trustee Pop did, they're put on there, until such time as they're either completed, or they are presented to the board to be removed from that, released from that. Trustee Pop, I got to tell you, I'm impressed with your long suffering on this project, because it, it's not the kind of thing you even want to look at as the potential for a rate increase for water. Yet at the same time, due to your diligence and looking into this, we've discovered some things that frankly, it took more than a cursory review of just to say, eh, we need to change the rates. So thank you so far for what you've done behind the scenes, even though we don't have anything to present at this time, I know. But I, it's not an easy task, and I know you've been working with the administrator and the Secret Service of Public Works, and so, but.
I have been working hard on it, and I try and just. I used to be quiet and say no report, I say that again tonight.
I understand, I just want to make sure everybody realizes, I just want to make sure everybody realizes that this is kind of the way we've done it in lieu of committees and things of that sort. We're trying to get certain tasks associated with the trustee to move forward on, hopefully to move things along faster than by going to committee. Committees tended to, in my opinion, slow the process rather than approve it. It seemed like it was pretty much the committee chair that was doing the work anyhow, so why not just occasionally ask a trustee to take the lead on the topic? So trustee Pop, thank you for your efforts in that, and I know probably by January we'll have something that we'll have to address on that. And as indicated, we have discovered some things that are unfortunate that we've been.
Say no more.
Yeah, okay. Anyhow, and then trustee, and then trustee Gray, I know that you had brought up last summer regarding the basketball. And I, I think in review of the agendas and the methods and everything else, Clark Hazer had put that back on there because it had not come before the board for a release. If you want to be released from that at this point, that's fine, I get, or if we want to continue to look, take interest in that, that's fine as well.
We just want to lease it out, but it'll come back up, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, once that, once we get over the holidays, so. Yeah, we'll release it and then I'll break it down.
That's fine, so, so.
We can do it with that?
No, it's, it's just a point of leadership on the matter, and I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't want anybody to feel like anything's targeted or whatever, it's just merely, I'm stepping up, I'm dealing with this, or I'm asking you to be released from that, at some point if somebody else decides that they want to step in and deal with that, they can. Or trustee Gray can step up and deal with that in the future as well. The whole purpose of this level of accountability is just to make it performance-based, and make sure that we're making progress, or identifies somebody needs help with something. So if trustee Gray says, hey, I really, I'm struggling with this, or trustee Pop says I need a little help with this, you know, you can request somebody else or a department head that you may not have given thought of, you know. So that's the reason for keeping it on there, so we can identify progress in that, so. And now we've added trustee Horn to deal with ordinance violation assessed fees, so. Anyhow, any, anything else in the official's reports? I would like to address briefly under the official's reports, I know we've had some discussions in here. I'll be as brief as I can, but I want to make sure you're all aware of the fact that we've had some discussions with baseball specifically, pertaining to our expectations. And there were about seven items of safeguards that were presented to the leadership of baseball. Background checks, certain measures of financial accountability, good standing of the state, you know, one of the secretaries of state, attorneys general, whatever the case may be. Indemnification against the village, things of that sort. And, and these are things that, I just want to clarify, when we establish the ordinance pertaining to the price structure for use of the facilities, the park building, different things like that, we established a priority by which we would afford organizations the opportunity, individuals to the opportunity to use facilities, and we'd prioritize, based on, I believe there's four tiers, that we'd prioritize who would have access to the facilities. Contracted partners, I think is what it was described as, would have a higher priority than just an individual, because we want to perpetuate the programs. Certainly the highest one for use of the facilities would be village-run events themselves. So in review of some situations that have taken place in other communities, not necessarily here, and even looking at the school district and some of their policies pertaining to facility usage, we realized that we needed to probably start to address some of those concerns. Last year, we had two football organizations using our facilities. It's a little uncomfortable for some. We had the Mooney team that was using the facilities, and they weren't charged anything for using the facilities, and that's because they were kind of evolving, we hadn't really set, you know, we just learned the process, but they, they weren't charged anything because they were the Mooney team. Then we had a team from a neighboring community that was virtually homeless, I guess a few of us kind of wanted to say that. And they requested the use of the facilities, but because they were not a partner organization, they paid to be there, and they had no problem with that. So we gave priority to our own local organization, and then we afforded other organizations the ability to come in as a business transaction. Our own organizations, because of the partnership, where we're waiving the fees and different things like that, there's a certain potential liability in talking to the attorney and such, that as a result of giving it to them, that implies a reciprocal relationship of liability. And we need indemnification, we need certain minimum guidelines, background checks, things like that. Otherwise, we're potentially exposing ourselves to a lawsuit. And in today's society, lawsuits, we don't need to open ourselves to any of that, and we don't absolutely, I mean, let's, let's just be safe. So there was, there was a number of items that were presented to baseball specifically. They had some meetings, they indicated a, what seemed to be a desire to move forward with some of that, but yet they kicked the can down the road from things that should have taken place in August, and they still haven't accomplished them yet in December. There was a meeting that took place between Ruben, Mr. Wallace and myself, with the head of baseball yesterday, the day before. Two days ago, that's a blur. And Mr. Montes, if you don't mind, could you just come forward and just give a brief summary of the tone and the direction and the potential for that, you know, relationship?
At first, there, there were definite, different points of opinion. I think the, the main things that we were asking for were the background checks and the accountability, and those were agreed upon. It was the, their voting of their board, the presidents and vice president, their board were the issue line. We, as the village, and listening to the community. We, as the village, and listening to the community, understood the concerns of the parents, not having to say so, not being able to voice opinions, concerns, have inputs. In which we agree that there should be accountability and a voice. And so we have asked that if we are going to partner, that we, that that would be addressed. That the bylaws, which are in writing now, they've been changed originally from, where there was a vote, I believe in annual voting, for the president, vice president, board, to where the board, at this point, their stance was it was, it sounds like for life. That these are, once they're voted in, they're in and cannot be removed. So, having, having discussed it, we are coming to, I believe, an agreement, we're finding common ground. And we have scheduled a meeting, a follow-up meeting for next week, the 18th. At this point, the president is going to speak to the board, share those concerns.
His board.
His board, correct, his board, and, and discuss this point of contention. And we'll see next week where we're at with the bylaws and if we can move forward.
It, it, it just seemed like going into the meeting that they had made up their mind, they. I don't want to project or, or cast any dispersion on the perceptions that may have been there. It's just a matter of good practice, I believe. Trustee Pop accompanied me to a meeting they had back in October, was it? And it was, if you can summarize for the rest of the trustees, the, the tone of that meeting?
Well, the tone was such that what I observed is that the, the board would ask for, to have a vote of people to step forward. And if they wanted to be the treasurer or the president or vice president, they would, could get nominated for that. Well, no one was stepping forward for a few years, they said it. No one's coming forward, so they made a decision that no longer would we be voting. From now on, the board will be the board until a member resigns or moves out of the community, or whatever it may be, but they're a board member forever. Well, there were quite a few people at the meeting that I went to with the mayor. And when I went up to speak to them, I says, I'm sure the last thing you want to see is a politician sticking his nose in your sports. But I kind of felt a little justified in the fact that I coached for over fifteen years, two different sports. And I knew some of the things that have to happen to have that. And I just felt that they were out of line, that they made of a state. I said, I felt, I feel you made of a state, look at all the people you got here now. They said, well, they only reason they came was because we said we're not going to let anyone else on the board, or whatever. They justified their position because of the people who were there, but they would not change their mind. And I think that's your goal of contention right now with them, that there's no voting for any positions on the board that runs the league. So that's, that's not an out of league.
And, and I guess the point is with that, there's any number of things that were addressed, that were presented to baseball, that we would like to see for all our partner programs. And it wasn't initially a point that even had to be brought up by Ruben and Mr. Wallace initially when they had a meeting back in the spring. Because their bylaws clearly stated, they have an election every August or September.
Yeah, I'm sorry, mayor, if I may also say that that's why this came about, about us being sure, partnering with them, that they follow state regulations, the law.
Right.
Which, as the mayor said, that, I'll use the word dragging their feet, they're not, they're not doing what we've asked them to do so far. They have no responsibility.
So there, there is, it, it's a concern because we want to make sure that the children in our community are afforded a good, fair program to participate in, that if there's not even open accountability of their books or whatever else within their own ranks, how do we know that our children are not being gouged in pricing or whatever the case may be, and situations like that? And I'm not saying they are, but we have no idea. So, in the discussion, before I had to leave and go to another meeting, I guess I dropped the bomb and ran to help Ruben to defuse it, was that the village has a few options available. And that is, well, the first option is we just ignore it like it's been ignored in the past. And take a don't ask, don't tell kind of approach to whatever goes on, that they just use the facilities. We didn't even have keys to the buildings that are, that are on our property at one point. And that came about more recently, just as a result of us demanding. And we don't know what they're storing back there, we got insurance that covers these buildings and they might have plastic gas cans in there from the gators and yet our insurance requires us to have metal gas cans, you know, whatever the case may be, you know. So simple things like that, the contention regarding the banners and signage and stuff like that, that's out of compliance with our, our own ordinances, but yet at the same time, there's other ways to work around some of those things. I think they seem to be more interested, at one point, to seek out legal counsel to defend their ability to violate our local ordinances than they did to simply get along with our expectations. And that's the way it came across. I'm not saying that they're terrible people, I think they're good people with good intentions. But the delivery and the communication is a big concern. Anyhow, we had indicated, before I had to leave the meeting and left it with Mr. Batista, was that the village can either allow them to continue without question, which I don't think is a good idea because of the potential liability that I addressed earlier. The other one would be, we simply get them to cooperate with our expectations so that there's not an issue of compliance, there's not an issue of liability, and there's not an issue of meeting the concerns and the expectation of the voters, the constituents of our, of our village. If they're not interested in participating to our expectations, we're not going to tell them they got to go away. We don't have the jurisdiction to shut their organization down. But we do have the jurisdiction to say who has access to our facilities and whether that's a business transaction or it's a partnership. You know, when the Bulldogs came over, that was a business transaction, great organization, but it was a business transaction. The alternative would be, we would find another organization that would want to step up and run baseball on village property. Certainly, I would assume the school district would prefer another unit of government over an organization that's not compliant with things as well. Just, the next point would be that the village actually through our parks and rent program, that, you know, we've discussed doing more, implementing soccer, implementing different things like that. We're already starting to do fitness and karate and different things like that for the kids. You know, if we had to step up and do it through the village, I think we could do it and do it better. That's a perspective, it might have. What's that?
To the fair.
Well, exactly. You know, we, it's unfortunate, and that's the, the fact that's bothersome, is we, we had so many families that have been frustrated with the system, the mechanism that's in play, that they have actually taken their kids to Frankford, to Crete, to Tenley, whatever the case may be, because they don't like the, I mean, it's, it's not even the politics, it's just, sometimes it's just the attitude. And, you know, at least we, as a municipality, are accountable to the voters, you know. And our staff, our department heads and such are accountable to us. So there is that measure of accountability and they can come in here and yell at us three minutes every two weeks, twice a, twice a year, twice a month. You know, and we can come in the office and yell at us if they want to, you know, but I guess my point is, is we, we, we have to make ourselves vulnerable in that situation. So we have some options. I want you to be aware of the fact that we are in that situation where we're trying to encourage the current organizations to meet the expectations that have been put on the table for them. But if they don't, I need you guys to be aware of the fact that we may have to step up and do it ourselves if there's not another organization at will. I personally don't want to see the kids suffer by not having a program. So just want to make sure you're all aware of that and if you have any input on that, this would be a good time to share.
Maggie had a lot, but we'll be here a lot. But no, I, I, you are absolutely right, mayor, in the fact that I firstly have been on that board and my kids did play here. I'm no longer on that board, my kids no longer play here, for the fact of certain people that are running it. And I will say that on record, it's not the president. It is partly, but it is not all him.
Understood.
And I wish he would, he's been there last two meetings, I wish he would stick around.
Yeah.
To see what he has to say. So I mean, if you guys have contact with him, I know that sometimes he's along, but I would like to see what just whoever has to say.
Well, and, and just, and just to acknowledge your point there, I have never had an issue of contention with Mr. Ruben. He's, he's been a great, frankly, he's been the gentleman every time I've had to interact with him.
If I could interject, I, I will say this, that as we concluded, we were on the same page relative to the, he was in agreement and saw our, our concern, the, the lack of.
Good to hear something positive.
Yeah, now wanting to hold an election and he did, and I believe Mr. Wallace, I think you were still there, and he did agree to, to that and bring it to his board. And he agreed with us, so.
So I, I, at this point, we may be in a situation where we either simply just run baseball ourselves. Or we give them a, a grace period, accommodating, a contractual agreement of some sort, a binding expectation on their policies and such. But I would stipulate that four to five months prior to their next registration, not this one because that's January, that if they are allowed to continue this year, that four to five months prior to their next registration period, so it'd be August of next year, they would have to have their open elections. And they'd have to do a better job of communicating with people because other than that announcement that went out to all the families, which was the one that trustee Pop and I attended, they routinely send information out to all the parents, it's even a lot to know about them. So, and I know we do it differently here because we're a unit of government, we have to adhere to open meetings issues and things like that. Their meetings, I was a little surprised at, I've attended a few of their meetings and they have opened to the public, if you will. And they, they send everybody out and then they have a meeting, you know, and, and Jackie's laughing. Jackie never told me that, I know. So, that's just kind of the situation where it. I would love for the organizations that we have in the town to just simply, you know, evolve into the current standing expectations of, I mean, we can't just let things continue the way they were without the checks and balances. And there's things that we discover, social norms that have evolved, we have to evolve with in our expectations and how we deal with it. It's not easy. It makes us sometimes look like the bad guys for being heavy handed. It's not about power for us, it's about taking care of our, our families, our kids, so. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a official report.
Yes, sir.
Apologize, I just realized that that's where this, what I had you will, I mean, I would like to show all this stuff. On November twenty second, two thousand thirteen, I attended the Chicago South Atlantic Economic Development Corporation Core League Economic Development Forum. For those of you on the board that don't know, the village of Moni is a member of that group. We're probably the only village in Will County that's a member of that group, according to the list that I have here. This is probably the second meeting I've attended this year. My focus and reason for being there is because of economic development, which is my passion. Heidi, at the last meeting, you talked about economic development and secondary education and project leading the way. I look at it from a different perspective. I have with me, and I'd like to pass this around, I apologize, I don't have one copy, but I'd like to have in the official minutes, vision twenty, two thousand twenty-two, that was presented by the village of South Holland. It's a five-year plan that they presented and did an excellent presentation of Don D. Graff, who's the mayor of the village of South Holland, presented it. They really did a lot of things toward making their village a better village and in particular, developing economic development. That was one of the presentations, and we can get some of that information from them, they're willing to share that. They have a full-time economic development person on staff. They're doing a good job of bringing businesses in, their list of companies they've brought in in the last couple of years is very impressive. But there were other presentations at this meeting, one of the presentation was by a group called Cross Rail Chicago. This is the express train that's set to travel two hundred and twenty miles an hour from Chicago to Champaign. We know about the one to St. Louis, but not too many people know about the one to Champaign. The significance of that is it's only intended to make one stop from the time it leaves to Chicago, from the time it gets to Champaign. That stop at the moment is University Park. Not Moni, not, but, but University Park. Or, another name we haven't heard too much of recently, South Suburban Airport. I think it's incumbent upon the village of Moni to pay attention to economic development. Because if that comes this way, if the Eliana comes this way, if the South Suburban Airport comes this way, we're right in the middle of all of that one way or the other. And a strong economic five-year plan, we talked a few minutes ago with Mr. Wallace about a five-year capital plan. I think it's difficult to have a five-year capital plan without a five-year plan, period. Capital plan is part of a five-year plan, it's not the end result by itself. Been quite a few years since the village of Moni did that. It's probably something that we could pay attention to. We had a presentation by Carter Sterling of Sterling Lumber, a company that has now taken five different facilities and merged them all into one facility, again, part of economic development that was a part of that meeting. Al Mayor, the deputy council, general council of the Illinois Department of Commerce, made a presentation. Mr. Wallace, I'm sure you're aware of this, but enterprise zones, their decision that made that there will be no more new enterprise zones. And that they will be gradually phased out, they will be supporting the ninety-seven that they have, but they'll be gradually phasing those out. That's information that we need to have in the village of Moni and make it part of our economic development plan, as we look at our TIF districts, et cetera. And then there was a presentation by the South Suburban Land Bank and Development Authority relative to things that are going on in the area. I personally know of a number of companies that are in the area that are looking for economic development and I think this is something that the village of Moni should be paying attention to. So just wanted to mention that I've been to this, the next meeting is in January in, I believe, South, not South Chicago, hey, Soft Trail, in Soft Trail, I do plan on attending. I'm attending on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, which I'm a director of, on behalf of my company that I work for, which, who is also interested in this. And with your permission, on behalf of the village as well, not as a authorized member, but just somebody who'll give a report on it, get input on it. That's all that, thank you.
And just in that regard, myself, the clerk and other trustees at different times in the past have attended some of those meetings. It's very useful to identify what other municipalities in the surrounding area are involved in. It's, it's enlightening. There's one, it was actually kind of a neat one that was pertaining to vitreous. And there's a lot that can be drawn in our area, just learning from other communities what we're doing. And find out what's relevant to us and see what we can do there as well. So by all means, as we give these notifications, we'll try to make sure that we get them out to all the trustees. So that if you're, have time or availability to attend these, they're typically on a Friday, like thirty or nine o'clock in the morning. But they're like, plus a quarter, so. Anybody else? At this point, anything of old new, old business or new business?
On behalf of former trustee George Pearson, I'd like to ask about the financial report for the Fall Fest.
I'd ask Batista to have a point of interaction with the trustees as much as he could afford and the time to deal with that, but Mr. Batista, could you give a review of that?
Yes, yeah. Okay. In summary, Fall Fest took in sixty thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and our actual expense was forty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. With a profit of fifteen thousand five hundred and eight dollars.
Hey, I'm sorry, Ruben, I interrupted, I didn't listen to you on that. I told him you could get a copy of that from.
We've already reviewed it. But from a public point of view, I'd like to, I'd like to talk about it. From a public point of view, I'd like to, I'd like to talk about it.
So, have, have, have you had a chance to meet with Mr. Batista? Were there any things in particular that you feel like the public really needs to know specifically? I mean, I, full disclosure, so.
I, I think what was impressive was the fact that we did bring in sixty, almost sixty-one thousand dollars. Our expenses were only forty-five in terms of expense. There was a twenty-two thousand dollar expenditure of capital improvements, which I think was absolutely the right thing to do. If you look at the cold hard, you know, we technically lost money, but I don't think so at all. We spent twenty-two thousand dollars on capital investments that will last ten years. If you amortize that over a ten-year period, given the short amount of time, given the absolutely positive results that we had at that, I think it was a tremendous success, both from the point of view of village morale, as well as financially, quite frankly. If you look at it from a pure financial point of view, here, I'm not the financial person you are, but I, I think we spent twenty-two thousand dollars on a capital investment that now gives us a lot of other opportunities to use in other ways. I think it was a good decision, and I applaud the people that were, that made that decision, and I think we need to be upfront about that.
So, overall, we're at a net loss of seven thousand dollars if you count the, the infrastructure upgrades.
Seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven.
But if we were a business, and I'm the business person, you would take that twenty-two thousand dollars, you would amortize that over a ten-year period, and you would say it was twenty-two hundred dollars. And then you'd have a pretty good profit there. And I think we, even though we're not a business, we approached that particular part of it as an investment in infrastructure, and that's something we're going to talk a lot about over the next few months. And that was an infrastructure improvement that will allow us next year to have even a better program. And we've already spent that money, we don't have to spend it again. So, I appreciate you taking the time to speak with me individually, as well as the other trustees, I'm sure, but I think it was a very big success, and I don't think we need to apologize for it in any way. I think we accomplished exactly what we wanted to accomplish, number one. Number two, we had full disclosure. I'm very comfortable with the review that you gave me, and I think we'll make it even better next year.
And may I say that simply, without the capital improvement, we actually made fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
And now we have something like you say, trustee Holston, we have a water supply and electric supply that did not exist before, that's, how many feet, David, from anything else? Quite a few, a thousand? I don't know. It's usable, so, it's a good improvement.
If I could, at this point, I think this is probably the perfect time to do it, is, not that we're discussing tonight, but I just want to plant the seed, maybe bring it up in January, about Fall Fest twenty-fourteen. Yeah.
And that being said, you know, being an event person too, if, you know, looking at a twenty-two thousand infrastructure charge that wouldn't be counted against an event at all, so that was improvements to, you know, our village, not to this event. So, the way I look at this, we made fifteen thousand dollars our first time out, and we learned a whole heck of a lot.
Absolutely. And in that regard, regarding our planning, January seems to me to be a good month for us to deal with internal department planning, if I fuck the military out of that, instead of me getting everybody agitated, because I, I enjoy riding on the seat of my pants, not so much, people around me don't. Now that we've got it under our belt, it's time to go ahead and plan in advance. Frankly, we already already be booking our headliners.
We've already, we've already pulled that direction.
So, in that regard, so other things we're going to be doing, our Kids' Day again, different things of that sort, we need to get, get those already spelled out and planned out. I mean, this is a short run for a lot of this. I'm thrilled with the results for this year. This is not a state-of-the-village address or anything like that, but I was very, very pleased overall with what we accomplished this year. I know this is December, our last meeting of the year, but I'm very pleased with how it's caused us to identify our strengths, some of our weaknesses, you know, but it's given us opportunities. And I, I believe that we are getting stronger. Front office, I'm thrilled to see the way our front office is beginning to hum, sing, you know, and no dancing going on up front, you know, we're, we're, we got a good staff that understands what they're doing, and they're making good progress up there. That's a good compliment to all of our other departments, our police and our public works, you know, takes a little bit of the burden off of them, but we have our front office working better in cooperation with them. The repeater system for public works makes it easier, because Michelle has access to a base station to communicate with them for water billing, turn offs, whatever kind of things like that, and just enhancing our communications across the world, so. Anything else that you're all over new business?
I have just one and two things, very quickly. Last month, I also brought up to you about, I wanted an update on the new website that we were going to get it within nine days, I still don't have that, so I'm going to have a conversation with you about that. And then for new business, kind of going, piggybacking on what Ruben had talked about and Mr. Wallace, we have a capital plan, I'm looking forward to that, is the Public Works Plan. I also would like to see a plan, then, kind of a vision that all of us have as a plan, and events that we want to do for next year as well, so we aren't doing it in three weeks or three months. Kind of get it, you know, if we're doing more public, you know, classes and things, to get kind of what we take on it. And piggybacking on that, I believe we really should, and I talked about it last May, have a public forum in inviting all of our residents to find out what they want. I know that we had talked about partnering with another village on some of the Christmas things this year, but frankly, I had some great conversations with business owners in town, what they would like to do in our own town, kind of like we did for Kids' Days, keep everybody here. So, I think it'd be something that we might be able to have when it slows down after the holidays, just have a community forum here and find out what our residents want as well.
Well, and much like we did with the sign on, which kind of didn't get a lot of response, you know, in the fighting zoning commission, you know, we had three or four people that actually submitted concerns. What I would ask the trustees to do, specifically pertaining to our next year's anticipated events or organized activities or programming that we might be offering as a village, simply put it in writing and submit it to the administrator or myself. Either by email, or would you want them to just send it to Ruben, that's fine, pertaining to programming events and all that good stuff, that's fine.
Is that better too?
Right, but it, but as, as it's entering out, community services program and all that, so, is, I guess I referred to Ruben as doing everything eventful, whether it's a crisis or a, or a activity of some sort. But if you guys have ideas, suggestions, by all means, submit those to Ruben, so he can compile those when the staff is having some of their structured planning times and trying to put things on a calendar and stuff. It's not saying this is going to be, how it's going to be defined, it's just saying, these are some things that need to be considered.
I agree, and that's why I thought maybe having the tone involved, you had to say, you know, what they want to, might be important.
Sure, interesting. Meanwhile, as trustees, please submit your, your ideas, your input.
I have an answer for trustee Gonzalez, who's a report on the website. Virtually sixty-five percent of all the page templates have been developed, a homepage, news page, poll and the news page individual, a general page, a government page. The Moni Cloud Server is at eighty percent completion. And following up in the remainder, as we start to bring this toward a conclusion, we have designated Assistant Administrator Barb Ray as the point person to keep an update, a weekly update of where this is going. And additionally, some of the things that are needed are updated photos of all village employees. So, if you have some electronic media photos that you would like to submit.
Several from April.
You know, you can pick those out, we can start to delineate those, we will need those. Any email accounts, not associated with specific employees, but you know, your village email accounts, and we can certainly provide those. And we'll provide also all the phone numbers, it's starting to gather the data for the phone numbers for the village and the different departments and things of that nature, as well as village-owned buildings and things of that nature, such as the park building, that it can be used for certain local events. So, it is starting to come to fruition, a lot of that base has been established, and now in the hierarchy of things, we're starting to collect that data and put it in the proper perspective there, if you will. That was just a recent update, the emails, so, you should have got that as well there.
I just, just after you mentioned it.
That's all I have, thank you.
And I, I did want to include in there, one of the things that we were able to get the web developer to incorporate was the Mr. Wallace's of the cloud, and that is taking us, it's a technical transition from what we've had, which has been some things that were done on an exchange server, which had limitations of licensing costs. And the cloud is a CalDev, CardDev, which is a calendar management, and a contact management that can be used within the village for the department heads and their staff and such, for the purposes of coordinated schedules and sharing address books and things of that sort, which will make it a lot easier for them to make their schedules and contacts and everything blend. So, that's something that we got them to include in that, that was not previously part of the bill, so, yes, sir.
Have we, have we transitioned to new business then?
Yeah, that was new business, yeah.
We're actually in both.
I.
Are we doing both at the same time?
Well, I, I didn't know if we had anything for either one, frankly, there's nothing on the items.
I've got a couple of things that are in the vein of what Mr. Mr. Wallace is talking about, I'd like to chime in on, one of which I know I've talked with him about recently. Ome, I think it's, one of the things I'd like to see us focus on is trying to get the agenda and the board packet to the trustees and the public sooner. This is two months in a row now that we have not had the village webpage updated with the agenda forty-eight hours before. We may not be required to legally, but I think morally we are. And the expectation is legally, if we have a full time, I believe you just said Barb Ray is appointed in that area at this point, we're required then legally to have it there forty-eight hours before. But I'd like to see us have it there more than forty-eight hours, like the Friday before, the Thursday before. I think it's, I like to spend time preparing for these meetings, I don't like long meetings, but I do like to be prepared. I think we owe it to the village and people, the constituents that we represent, to have good information. I like to do my research. When we start talking about bonds and things, I don't have that information at my disposal, so I have to do research on it, and I like to have time to do that. I work at another job, I was there Monday from about seven in the morning until six in the evening, went from there right over here to get my packet. And that doesn't give much time to review that packet, and I was there at noon, here at noon Monday, it wasn't ready. I was here Friday, and it wasn't ready. I'd like to see that packet, well, I'd like to see us work toward having that packet ready the Thursday or Friday before the board meeting. I realize there's always last minute things that could come up, but I don't see anything on tonight's agenda that I would think really was a last minute add. And I think it would make a big difference to us, as well as to the perception the public has, if we have it on the webpage available more than forty-eight hours, more than the minimum.
Sure.
If we have a hiccup, I don't know what happened this month, but I looked Sunday, or Monday night at six o'clock, it wasn't on there. I looked at nine o'clock Monday night, it wasn't on there. I looked at eight o'clock Monday morning, it wasn't on there.
Tuesday.
Tuesday morning, excuse me. And, and I think that that's the second month in a row I've seen that happen. Secondly, I'd like to see us look at the possibilities of the trustees having web access, Wi-Fi access with some type of setup here at this meeting, so that those of us that want to use that, that might have particular expertise, not expertise, but the ability to do some work on that. I don't want to talk on my email, but I like to sometimes hit the button and look for a code or look for a particular subject that we're talking. That's a long-term goal, that's certainly nothing we can do short-term, but I think most, a lot of villages have that now, and we ought to be talking about it. I can work with Mr. Pop.
I, I think I saw trustee Pop say that he'd like to.
I'll just bring that side of the partner with me, she just won't be able to talk.
But again, I think as we go into the twenty-first century, we want to be able to have those tools at our access so that we can do a better job of managing.
I understand, I agree. I, I think to a couple of your points, particularly to Barb and her position, she has been designated the point person going forward with the new site. The old site has its own nuances, and her skill set, and frankly, there's a very limited, yeah, it, it's a struggle with the previous configuration, and there was a problem, there was one computer in this, that was configured to have access to that, and there was some problems with the Comcast, among other things that were going on with our connectivity. That was resolved Tuesday morning, and, and the agenda was posted. But I will not hold Barb responsible for running an old system that we're about to depart from going forward again. And I don't dispute that.
Well, again, my, my suggestion is toward the intent of the future, I'd like to see us working toward having the agenda sooner rather than later.
I think Clerk Hager would be in full agreement on that as well, I know he's requested similar issues. And I think that even if it's posted, I think you and I talked about this as well, it can be posted, it can be amended, you know, as long as the amendment is not more than, or less than forty hours. So, if we can shoot for Friday, you know, as, as a good starting point, that's great.
That being said, if, as long as it's done, then too, we could, because I too, you know, working can't get here before, and work at hours to shoot it electronically to us, and then we have it all weekend.
There you go.
Well, and actually, if it's posted on the web, then you can, you can go over it directly from the web itself. So, that'll be the version we, we go towards regardless of whether we have tablets or laptops or anything else available to the trustees, you know, directly or not. The reality is, is that you would have the majority of the packet with rare exception, because I think even all the stuff we're doing now, if it's a pending agreement of some sort, it's actually watermarked with graphs under it, which.
It is.
So, and that stuff that we've been able to do more recently, so, we're taking steps towards that, but agreed that.
Well, I'm, I'm not the expert that you are, Mr. Mayor, but I know that with a window-based system, you're able to, you know, do some things with Outlook and or with other things, have files, put folders on, and you can sit there and do a lot more than that, than you can all these papers, trying to find this, find that. It doesn't work for all, some of us are pretty good.
And I'm, I'm younger than some and older than others, but I also understand that there is, I did try about a year ago, when we had discussions with previous administration, where I had gotten the packet as a PDF, and I brought an iPad in, and I sat there and I was trying to flip pages and stay on, you know, with, with the agenda, you know, the agenda pretty much stays on task, I tried. But when you flip around from one section to another, it's not, it's not really as intuitive as being able to flip entire staple sections like it is right now. So, it would be an adjustment for some of us more than others, and those of us that are more acclimated to technology would still struggle, because it's still easier to deal with a hard copy at times. So, I'm just saying, the practical aspect of it is good intentions, but until you bring in a tablet or a PC or something like that and try it, I would be very leery of spending any money to pursue that as a full-out implementation without at least half the board recognizing the relevance of the.
I understand, I, I do it every day in my job, so.
Yeah, email is fine, you can go through it on your computer and all that, you can prep it. You can prep it yourself and all that, that's fine, but I'm just saying, at the meeting, there's times you're just having the papers there are a point of efficiency.
See each room.
Agreed. Now, we could have a couple of monitors on opposite sides there, and you guys could see that, okay. Anything else?
I have something on the whole business, you know, it doesn't come up in the executive session, it's never on the event, and I, I think I just need to bring it up. I'd like to see us get back into a resolution on the senior side.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
Other trustees may not be even aware of.
Sure.
Whatever was going on before, but I'd like to see us get back on track.
Sure, absolutely.
It's like almost a forgotten issue.
It's not been forgotten, but it's had its own.
Appreciate you.
Absolutely. Sure. Anything else? Open to the public, non-agenda items. Please, please limit your comments to three minutes. Jackie, we'll give you a little bit more time, since you missed me so much.
Jackie Harlan, two-five-six-two-oh, Shoal Creek Drive. I should have brought a cushion, I can tell you that. I would just like to thank the village administration and trustees for the support that I felt. I would just like to thank the village administration and trustees for the support that I felt in the tragedy that I just went through. It made me proud to be a member of Moni. And in saying that, I think a lot of people learned where Moni was that didn't know where Moni was before. But is there any chance of the Moni Funeral Department ever getting to enlarge their parking lot?
It's a business that could and probably should request additional parking, but it's not a department, if you will, of the village, so it's, it's a freestanding business.
They can request? I thought they had requested and were turned down to put more parking in. I just want to, I promised the funeral director, I would bring it up.
I'm not sure what their land is, and I'm not sure what the water, stormwater management issues might be, so.
May I say before you say the word that? They were turned down, Jackie. They'll explain that to you.
Okay.
Yes, they did inquire, there's some engineering that needs to take place on their part. They do have to adhere to the Will County Stormwater Management Ordinance, so it's a direction of that. It does entail some, you know, financial obligation, but I'm sure that there is something that could be done there. It appears that they have the property to do so, it's just a matter of moving forward with that and staying within the code, fulfilling the code for that.
Will County Code?
No, our code.
It's Moni Code.
Yeah, it's Moni Code. Moni by ordinance has adopted the Will County Stormwater Management Ordinance, and we must adhere to that, so, but, you know, it can be accomplished, it's not a light financial burden, you know, it's just a parking lot, but when you need it, you need it.
Oh, boy.
You know, it's infrastructure, and that costs a lot of money.
If you don't deal with stormwater correctly, it's going to be cheating across there, you're going to have, you have to deal with it.
All right, my next question is, and I don't know if anybody has the answer to it, but I keep getting a lot of questions, and I want to know myself. I know it's University Park, but the corner of Drolly and Will Center Road has been leveled. Does anyone know what's going to happen there?
All the trees are gone.
It leveled, all the trees and everything. And I, so many people say, what are they doing? I don't know, do you know? No, Mr. Wallace, you're smiling.
I do not know. I'm smiling because I've been asked that question several times. I can only imagine that it's a development that is slated, you go in there, that is pure speculation.
So it is, it is University Park, though, so that's where we should question it.
But that was all Forest Preserve District.
Yeah, I saw, just casually, I saw what it looked like, Pipeline Company might have been out in the area at one time, as well as Forest Preserve, as well as, I don't, I saw several vehicles out there at one time, that looked like they may have been laying something, I don't know, but if they had to take trees, I don't remember any lines or some sort, I don't know.
Well, the trees came out after the lines went in, because I drove by there every single day, and it was, I had no idea.
Okay, I had no answer.
I'll call University Park.
Jack, I have to move on to the Moni Funeral Department. I truly believe that they were flabbergasted when they, they didn't realize what has to be done for a simple parking lot. It's very similar to a church I belong to that needed to expand in Oklahoma and had no room, so they bought a house and knocked the house down for a parking lot. I don't know if to tell you what that cost. So I think it's a similar situation, the cost is pretty high. They kind of took it as, we were trying to say, you don't want to do that.
Six-five-six-five-four Firestone. Two items, if I may. One is an observation, and the second is a question. The first of the observation is, I see a number of car dealerships, cars parked in an unpaved parking lot. And if memory serves me correct, any commercial use of land should be like that, should be paved. Observation. Question is, I see a lot of activity at the old First Midwest Bank at the ground of Court Street. Is there a potential new tenant coming in there, does he want to know?
There is a current tenant there. What used to be Deer Creek Church is now Living Creek Church, and they are using two of the spaces there on opposite sides of Cecilia and Jones, the old bank facility, as well as the pharmacy facility, I believe, are both being used by Living Creek Church for office space.
Okay, it's temporary, not a permanent thing?
As long as released, yeah, it's.
I've talked to some people, and they're trying to find a place for a church.
They own land on the other side of between Bridge one and fifty-seven, just down by Brunswick, just off the Brunswick, but they're not, they're not positioned to build on there inside the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else under open to the public? Okay. I believe we have one more item for executive session, that has to do with the review of the minutes, release for review for the minutes. I'm not sure, since our attorney is not present, we would simply throw that.
Then it would be your choice from the, as a result of the meeting with clerk Hager myself and attorney Brucheski, I believe that clerk Hager is prepared to move forward, but it is your choice, Mayor.
All right, thank you, it's a session to hit this down.
So.
Second. Okay, Holston, Pop. Roll call.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
No.
Pop.
Yes.
Hang on, it's Alice.
Yes.
Time's not for a.